The Town of Prescott, committee of the whole meeting. I call it order. And I ask for the... May I have a please to have a mover and second here to adopt the agenda? If anyone has any objections. Commissioner Burton, second by Commissioner Johnson. That the agenda be adopted as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Declarations of interest tonight. Are there any declarations of interest? Within or without? Okay, thank you. Presentations. We have one presentation this evening. Our planning consultants from WSP are here to review the official plan review process. I'd like to welcome Anita Scott and Nadia Desanti. And we also have Lara Nelson joining us on conference call.
Yes, I am here.
Can I just confirm that that's...
Lara, are you there?
Hi. I've been in the first period, but I didn't hear you.
Okay.
Okay, welcome.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And for yours.
Thank you. Good evening, members of committee and councillors. My name is Nadia Desanti. I'm a senior project manager with WSP. Anita Scott is our senior planner and Lara from Hampson is on the phone. We want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and to give you an update on the need for the official plan review for the Town of Prescott. We'll also be presenting via Lara, the growth management study that Hampson has prepared in part of this official plan review process. So, our presentation will consist of the project team, why the official plan review is required, and our overall work plan at a high level, the growth management analysis, which has been prepared by Hampson Consulting, and then our public consultation plan. So, our official plan team has illustrated. Tedioski is the prime planning consultant. Hampson is our sub consultant, whose task is specifically on growth management analysis, which is a requirement when municipalities do comprehensive review. We also have CGIS, who is a sub consultant to us. They're based out of Perth, Ontario, and they'll be doing all of the official plan schedules, the maps. So, I'm the lead planner project manager. Anita is integral into this project. And we also have Gray Fender, who's manager of planning in Thornhill. So, in the event that I'm not available, for whatever reason, on a strategic advice, he is there in support. Under Hampson, there's Russell Matthew, Lara Nelson, and Patrick. But Lara has been the prime consultant from Hampson. And CGIS, Jeff Dean, is the main contact there. Brandon is the, if I can say, the doer, worked with CGIS for many years, so having to have them on our team. I should say, Anita and I are based in Ottawa, so it's a nice, easy journey out to Prescott. So, we're based in Ottawa. Lara is in Toronto and CGIS is in Perth. Actually, Brandon is located up in Hurst. He just moved there last year, but all their stuff is done on computers and everything is a systematic issue. So, why is a municipality conducting an official plan review? There's a couple of reasons, mainly legislatively, but also looking at the community and where it's going. So, the last time the official plan was updated was in 2018 through a specific official plan amendment to address consistency with the 2014 provincial policy statement. But even since that was a very specific amendment, there are other legislative changes that have occurred that need to be reflected in the official plan. One of the things that we want to mention, as you may be aware, the province is updating the provincial policy statement. They might release a draft last summer. Comments on that draft are due in October. We have heard through another project that they might be releasing the written PPS at the end of March. So, that's what we're sort of anticipating. But in the meantime, there are things that we can still undertake as part of this project, which we'll explain a little bit later. This official plan review will have a variety of engagement events with technical agencies, specific groups that bring up business, economic development, tourism perspective, the general public, of course, and also there's an external agency review, so Ministry of Transportation, the various provincial ministries. So, there'll be a big engagement process. Once the official plan goes through the required public meetings, council adoption, it will then go to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. They will have 120 days to do the final approval. And then, any appeals, hopefully none, but the appeal period would be after the ministry approves the official plan. One of the changes under the Planning Act is that municipalities can prepare official plans for 10 years. So, before, it used to be every five years and the municipality had to review and update. Now, this plan could be for 10 years. It doesn't go into the municipality to look at it in five years if needed, but the new timeframe is 10 years, which is a good thing. So, some of the changes that have occurred was Bill 108. So, that was approved last year. That was the More Homes More Choices Act. It basically did several things, including reversing the timelines to approvals. So, you may recall Bill 139 extended the time periods for review. Now, they're shortened. So, for example, official plan amendments and zoning bylaw amendments have 120 days for approval before they were much longer. So, there are things like that that need to be addressed. In terms of our overall work plan, of course, we have a more detailed work plan, which it will be consistently being reviewed and updated. But the items on the left are essentially the key community engagement events, and I'll just read them for you. Anita will go into this in more detail. But we have just based some visioning workshops and a community survey, some key stakeholder meetings, as well as a special meeting of councils. So, that would be the Section 26 meeting of council, where we would come and present the key policy directions for review input on that. And then, statutory public open house, where we would have a draft official plan, and then statutory public meeting, where hopefully the plan will be recommended for council adoption. So, all of those events are integrated into the five, sorry, into four phases of our overall work plan. So, if you look at the red and the text to the right of those, those are the key deliverables, which would be the confirmation of the consultation plan, which is basically, for each of those blue events, we will have very specific objectives, who we're going to be meeting with, what's the intended outcome, and a timeline. And also to have a pre-consultation meeting with the ministry, which is a requirement. Phase two is the background research and report. We propose to have four discussion papers, have a background report, which will culminate basically the key findings from some of the existing municipal documents. Hampson's growth management analysis feeds into that background report. Phase three is really the drafting of the official plan. So, there'll be the special meeting of council, there'll be the broad public. The ministry will also be reviewing that draft official plan. So, the ministry will review the draft, and they will review the final version that's adopted by council. And phase four, that's the prepare the final official plan that will go forward to council adoption, and then the approval is by the ministry. In terms of tasks, so I've kind of reviewed these already. The growth management analysis that Hampson has prepared does look at population employment and housing projections over a 20-year timeframe. And we also will be looking at, and in the draft plan, or we'll be looking at the town's recreational master plan, the town's average management plan. We understand that council will be having a session on the strategic plan, so the results of that strategic plan consultation will feed into that background report to ensure that our policy directions are in line with an X number of pillars that come out of that strategic plan. And also, the discussion paper findings will inform the policy formulation. And in discussions with town staff over the last couple of months, we have identified four topics for the discussion papers. And so, these are on specific themes or specific elements where we really want more input from the community. We want some discussion on where the town should go with these items. So, the first one is economic development. And again, any results from the council's strategic plan will be embedded in here. So, there might be points that are not identified here, but could be augmented after the Saturday session. So, looking at underutilized land. So, these are lands that might have some opportunities for growth, development, or maybe not. So, looking at those. Looking at the lands around the 401 corridor, and many lands there are zoned industrial. Should they stay industrial or should they go to a commercial type of use? So, again, these are strategic matters, strategic items that we need input on. Should the town be subjected by those lands into smaller lots? They've been receiving inquiries for, you know, three to five acres. So, maybe something happens with that that makes it more desirable, marketable from a development perspective. And also, coordination with the neighborhood municipality. This will be something as part of our consultation plan to, you know, not, yes, this is being done for Prescott, but we also have to be mindful of what's happening around us. So, those are some of the key elements that we'd like to get some input on. The second topic is housing and neighborhood design. So, intensification. What does that look like? What does that mean to the community in Prescott? What does it mean to have single detached homes next to apartments? What are the concerns by the community? How do we address those? What do developers need to be considerate of? When they are coming forward with a proposal for an intensification project in terms of design, compatibility, that can mean different things. Could also mean different things in different contexts and different neighborhoods. So, what does that look like? And segue into the next point, neighborhood character and compatibility. Not every neighborhood of the Town of Prescott or in any municipality are the same. And so, what are those values? And maybe there are policies or design objectives at a high level that are created specific to that. Maybe, maybe not. Maybe it's a blanket wide approach. I don't know. But that is something that we'll seek community input on. As well, we need to be looking at buffering between land uses. So, between commercial land uses and residential, what does that look like? Buffering can be implemented in a variety of ways. It could be landscaping, it could be setbacks, it could be a variety of tools that can be used there. The third one is cultural heritage. And the, there's a separate act that deals with cultural heritage, but it is part of the provincial policy statement and therefore needs to be embedded in the official plan's policy direction. So, heritage. What is valuable? What should be preserved? Everybody has different opinions on that, so we'd like to hear from the community. And we also want to know demolition of designated properties. So, this is an area that has some objectivity, subjectivity as well. But we need to really see what the community has to say, what are the options for the town if they're being presented with an opportunity for redevelopment of a heritage property, maybe properties that are, you know, derelict, what do we do with them? So, this will help with understanding what the community values are and also setting some direction in the official plan. And the fourth topic is recreation, tourism, wayfinding, and active transportation. So, there is a potential for a multipurpose recreational facility in the town, and we understand it's a community priority. We want to understand how we can activate existing town assets. So, through the recreational master plan, we can, you know, glean some of that information. And if there's still some things in there that require further discussion, this is how we're going to get to the next level of input. Signage and wayfinding is very important, and it's related to recreation and tourism. If you don't have proper wayfinding to your facilities or to the places that you want people to go to, well, you're not going to get those tourists there. So, what can we do from a signage and wayfinding perspective in terms of a policy direction, which could lead into other elements beyond the official plan? And then, opportunities for improvements to active transportation facilities. So, that's pathways, those are trails. It could also be not only pathways and trails, but looking at it and what perspective we'll be bringing, is also looking at it from an age-friendly perspective. So, those who might be in motorized, wheelchairs or other mobile devices. So, we take an age-friendly approach when we look at the active transportation. It's not just for those who are physically able. So, there might be some, you know, winter snowmobiling, maybe cross entry skiing, those sorts of things. We'll have to dive into that a little bit more. I'm saying the winter because we had snow today. So, again, this is for all encompassing, to ensure that people can get out there and enjoy recreation and maybe use it as a form of transportation as well. So, now I'm going to turn it over to Lara, who will be presenting a number of slides on the growth management analysis. Lara, have you at full volume, I think? Uh-oh. I think I lost her. Okay. With this, this is why Anita is integral to the project. She's my IT support and everything else. The Polycom IT. Thank you for calling. I will advance the slides that Lara will be presenting. We do have our speaking notes in case our phone technology fails. We've got backup, so. Lara, are you there?
Must have got a better offer.
Wow. Sorry, normally we'd never do this in a meeting.
Oh, she can't hear. She can't hear us. So, oh, she's on the call, but she can't hear us. Is something disconnected?
Is it this? Can she try talking?
Lara, can you try talking? I don't think we're going to.
Technology.
Yeah. Well, we tried that and it seems to have failed.
Okay.
Okay, text her, tell her to try it.
Yes, so, well, you'll do that? Okay. So, maybe I'll just start with her slides until... Okay. So, hopefully we'll get her at least. If there are questions, I hope we can get her on the line for that. So, I'm going to unfortunately read because some of the stuff is technical and it is their work. So, please bear with me, and this is why I love paper and I don't go away on technology. All right. So, sorry. Good. So, as I mentioned, Hampson is providing input to the official plan review of this growth management analysis. At this point, a technical memorandum has been provided to the town in draft form. And the study is, has been completed in the context of the existing 2014 provincial policy statement, not the draft. So, just to highlight, the draft PPS that was released suggested a 25-year planning horizon. The existing PPS is a 20-year planning horizon, so we're sticking with the 20-year planning horizon. So, just wanted to clarify that. And basically, the analysis looks at planning needs and also land needs. So, the analysis examines recent growth and change in a town in terms of broader demographic and economic trends expected to influence how growth will occur, not only in Prescott, but also in eastern Ontario over the coming decades. Draft forecasts of population, housing, and employment growth have been prepared to 2041, but the emphasis is on the 20-year planning horizon from 2019, which is when we started this project, to 2039, which is a 20-year planning period. A high-level review of the town's designated land supply for residential and employment uses has also been undertaken based on a land supply inventory provided by town staff. The analysis of residential growth in the town suggests that population has been relatively stable in Prescott since 2001, within the context of moderate household growth. As of the 2016 census, the town had 4,100 rooms. In 2020, oh my gosh, here we are, 20,000. Okay. In 2020, households for an average household size of 2.03 residents. Similar to most municipalities in eastern Ontario, households continue to grow while the population remains stable. This is in large part a result of demographic change underway in the town, characterized by aging population and resulting in a gradual decline in average household size. The effect is a greater number of housing units are required to house the same amount of population than if that population were younger. The graphic on this slide illustrates the change in age structure of Prescott's population, and the table indicates the associated decline in average household size that occurred in Prescott since 2001. In terms of economic change and employment, Prescott experienced net declines in employment during the last two census periods relative to moderate growth in the early 2000s. The graphic on this slide illustrates the change in employment by sector in Prescott over the three census periods since 2001. The decline that occurred between 2006 and 2011 was mainly due to the 2008, 2009 recession. However, the continued loss of employment in the more recent census periods relates also to a shift in the economic base. This shift is characterized by continued decline in industrial employment of 38% or 320 jobs from 2011 to 2016. It is noted that many communities in Ontario had a similar experience with industrial employment during this period. Prescott remains a key workplace destination. Notwithstanding economic change and employment decline, Prescott continues to have a high activity rate and represents a key commuting destination for the surrounding area. The commuting patterns for Prescott are shown on the graphic on this slide, which indicate the largest commuter flows to the town in 2016. Prescott had net in commuting of 575 jobs or 26% of total jobs, which is a very high rate of net in commuting. Just over half of unemployed Prescott residents leave the town to work, primarily in Brockville. At the same time, the town provides employment opportunities for residents in surrounding areas, the largest being the commuter inflows from the adjacent communities of Edwardsburg, Cardinal, and Augusta. This graphic illustrates the forecast method used to prepare the outlook for Prescott. The forecasts are based upon a standard cohort survival forecast model, which is a well-accepted approach to forecasting. The forecast approach begins with taking into account national and provincial economic and demographic trends, and considers the outlook for eastern Ontario and leads residual working to the local Prescott level. The forecasts involved set principal assumptions and parameters within the forecast model related to Ontario's economic future and its social context, including the broader outlook and composition of the Ontario economy, migration and settlement patterns, such as national immigration policies and increasing concentration in urban centers, and demographic change, such as aging of the population. The draft forecast results indicate that the town will experience moderate growth over the forecast horizon to 2041, reaching a total population of 4,890 residents in 2,340 households and an employment base of 2,470 jobs over the forecast horizon to 2041. The 2019 to 2039 growth outlook shown in the table on this slide has been identified in order to provide a basis for managing growth and land use planning in the town for a 20-year planning period and updating the official plan consistent with provincial policy. A key consideration in forecasting future growth in Prescott is its aging population. The graphic on this slide illustrates the age structure of the population of 2016 and as anticipated at 2041. As shown, Prescott's population is expected to continue to age, which has important implications for planning for housing services and economic growth in the town. In terms of land supply, to accommodate this potential growth, a review and update to the town's inventory of vacant and underutilized land supply has been undertaken as part of the official plan review. As part of the growth management analysis, a review is undertaken of the potential in the inventory to accommodate residential and employment growth based on the initial inventory provided by the town. The now purpose to ensure the town has an incorporate and sufficient designated supply to meet the demand and forecast growth over the 20-year planning horizon. The capacity for growth was tested by client density assumptions based on direction from the official plan and on the ground to the identified land supply. The preliminary results suggest the town has a sufficient amount of urban designated lands to meet the growth outlook for residential and non-residential growth to the 2039 horizon. The land supply and the worrying assessment of development potential will continue to be refined, so any new developments that have come into place since the receipt of the town's land inventory will be provided by the town, and we'll update those numbers in the final report that Hampson will provide. So, as I look to, I mean, we still, we've lost contact in...
She can't hear us. We can't hear her, but we'll try her for questions after the presentation.
Okay. So, in the year 2020, paper is still the preferred option. So, I am going to turn it over to Anita, who's going to explain more detail about public consultation plan.
Okay. So, the public consultation plan for the official plan review project has been designed with early and consistent community engagement throughout each phase. We propose to kick off the community engagement process with two place-based visioning workshops, which would be held on the same day here in town. In discussions with town staff leading up to this evening, we've determined that the two workshops should target somewhat different audiences and be focused in their topics. So, the overall purpose of both visioning workshops will be to develop ideas for a new vision statement and goals, which would be included in the official plan as they are today, and they would be used to guide the development of contemporary land use policies to see Prescott's growth and development into the future. The first workshop, as discussed with town staff, would be focused on economic... The first workshop, as discussed with town staff, would be focused on economic development and would engage members of council, as well as the BIA, the Chamber of Commerce and potentially key business leaders in the town, and would be used to identify economic development priorities and goals that can then be translated into official plan policies. The second workshop would be open to all community members and would cover a range of policy planning issues that will be covered in the official plan. These may include things such as housing, how the community sees intensification or higher density developments happening in town, as Nadia spoke to questions of neighborhood compatibility, active transportation and cultural heritage. Following the vision of workshops, we have also made provisions in our work plan for meetings with key stakeholders, as Nadia referred to, the objective of which would be to receive their focused comments on any relevant planning issues that should be addressed through the official plan review based on those organizations' specific mandates and interests in the town. And these meetings may include meetings with the building and land development community here in Prescott, downtown business owners and other business owners, government agencies and special interest groups such as Parks Canada and the local health unit. We would all have policy ideas that may need to be incorporated in the OP. To encourage community awareness of the official plan review project, we propose that the town have a dedicated webpage on the town's website and using social media platforms such as Twitter and Facebook to advertise and provide notice of events. Notices would also be published in the local community newspapers and the town may wish to consider sending out a brief project introduction with an X tax bill, as well as advertising community events via radio ads, which we've seen some success with in previous official plan projects, including most recently in Lee's and Thousand Islands. And that really got the word out and got people to the events themselves and answering the online survey. We will also be considering the participation of people of all ages and abilities in the community engagement program throughout the process and will ensure that meeting venues are accessible and that any presentation materials that we prepare that are public-facing will be generally accessible to most persons. So we do this by using clear graphics, large fonts and high contrast in our presentations. Additional methods of participation are also something that we've considered, so beyond just getting people out to in-person events, we've proposed an online survey that will complement the initial visioning sessions for those community members who are unable to attend in person. We also recommend that the town maintain a mailing list through the website so that anyone interested in keeping up to date with the project and the process can receive emails directly with event notices, for example. We will also assist the town with engaging neighboring Indigenous communities that may have potential interest in the geographic land that the town includes, and this will be done early in the official plan review process. And typically, we would reach out to those communities, their land and resource managers as a first point of contact, and ask whether and how they would prefer to be engaged through the official plan review. This whole process will result in an Indigenous community engagement record, which is also submitted to the ministry along with the final official plan for approval. And lastly, we propose to incorporate some branding of the official plan review project, so that would appear in any notices. It would provide a consistent logo that community members can identify with when they're engaging with the project, and it can be used to help build community awareness, especially through social media. To that end, the logo that you see on the screen here is our attempt at capturing that idea and using the existing River sidewalk. We've worked with town staff to sort of identify an arrow through the water, meaning leading Prescott forward on the official plan review path and looking 20 years into the future. And so we propose to carry this logo, the colors and the branding all throughout the project. And I'll turn that back over to Nadia briefly for some of the next steps.
Thanks, Anita. So before we entertain questions, which I think is allowed, again, just the immediate next steps would be to, for the town, to identify any other vacant lands or any other development potential that has been explored since the receipt of those original maps. And Hampson would then finalize a report. That report will become an appendix, if you will, to the background report with the growth management specific analysis section as a chapter. And then we would want to have our pre-consultation with the ministry, the Civil Affairs and Housing, at that pre-consultation or the one window, one window partner or ministries call. So all the ministries participate in that call and they will identify areas of the official plan that should be updated, things that need to be considered. It's also an opportunity to hear from each provincial ministry to see if there's any updates happening to their own regulations and policies. So I do know, as of last summer, through a different project, I do know that the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry were updating their natural heritage policy manual, the one that was dated from 2010. So we might, I'm sure all of those provincial ministries are waiting for the PPS to be done, but again, it's not easy to find out what other legislation or guidelines, policies that might be coming down the pipe. And then we would like to hold the two place-based visioning workshops early on, just so we can start the momentum, start with the project organized, et cetera. So that would be the next tasks for us as a group, the town staff and ourselves and Hampson. So the, once we kind of have more direction on that, we will have a more not detailed work plan per se with every date, but we'll have targeted, you know, months as we move forward through the process. So happy to answer any questions and we're gonna try another number. Okay. So yes, thank you very much and happy to answer questions. So we're gonna get later on another line, so if there are questions, we'll...
Nadia, can you give me an approximate timing of your visioning workshops?
Timing in terms of length of...
And when we pass...
Well, so, yeah, so we wanted to have the, as directed by town staff, we want to have council to have your strategic plan session on the Saturday and let that goal carry out. We, we will be needing, having a call with Matthew and Dana to confirm those potential timelines. Ideally, I'd like to see, my understanding is that the strategic plan will be coming out at the end of January, so I think we should have the, at least the economic base vision in the one with the community shortly thereafter that. I think it's important for council to go through that process and, you know, and see where that takes us. And then, so I would say early to mid February, I would like to have those two-place based visioning workshops. We need to confirm the list of attendees on the venue. And I think for the economic development session, you know, we would likely have a journey, the business day or in the evening, and then the public maybe on a Saturday if that works, you know, those are the kinds of details we'll...
So you wouldn't see it the other way around, have the visioning workshop first and then we'll do our strategic plan?
So our understanding is that council should do the strategic plan first to see, yeah. Normally that's how it works, is whatever is in the strategic plan, those are kind of the key directions and then from that, there may be some things that can be carried in the official plan, others may be totally not land use space at all, so yeah. We think it's, it's a better, for a sense of outcome if council has that opportunity to go through that exercise.
Eric Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to thank you both for coming tonight. Excellent presentation, great roadmap to get us started and nothing here that I disagree with except for one point, and that's just on the growth management. And I've read, you know, the Hampson report here talks about natural, uh, natural decrease in population. I've seen that, I think, in a couple of places. And when we're looking at some of the projections, I mean, where's the one that actually shows by, I think, 2039, we've got more people between 80 and 84 than we do 40 to, than the 40s, yeah.
I just thought of a solution. What if she, can she call myself?
Yeah, okay.
Why don't I just...
I honestly don't, I don't think this is going to be something we're gonna delve into serious questions about, because I've got a pretty strong opinion on this one.
Yeah, but if there are other growth management questions, we can get her on myself and I can just put on speaker. Is that, wanna do that?
Sure.
I think, I mean, I think it's, let's, sorry, let's just do that, put my bringer on.
It's just, my point is in group management, some management analysis, and I don't take any issue with it because I know it's accurate, because that continues the way it is, but my point would be that, and it's going to be tied into each of the discussion papers anyways, but I, I think if we're willing, we're willing to accept a growth forecast where we go from 4,400 total population in 20 years and we're still sitting at 4,800, that to me is unacceptable. We have to have more growth from that, we have to, we have to have, I don't think that's sustainable as a community, to be honest. And I don't like the idea, you know, nothing against older people, but you know, you need people in your community that can take jobs if we're gonna have any sort of economic growth as well. And if we see where we've got numbers in 2041, where you look at the number of 80 to 84 and compare that to 35, 39, even 30 to 34, I mean, that to me is not a healthy community. That's a very unweighted balance. You need people here to work, otherwise we're never going to be able to attract jobs as well. So it just, it's a, it's a problematic situation. Nothing against retirees moving to town, we want them as well, but if you don't have a good mix, you have bigger problems. And to me, this would necessitate, maybe we need a discussion paper on that specifically, on options on how we address the growth issues and the growth concerns, because this to me is, I mean, I agree with the forecast, I think it's absolutely accurate, but we have to do, in my perspective, everything we can to turn that around and make sure that we're a healthier, growing, more vibrant community with, well, I don't, I just, the numbers already said that that's very concerning, because you're not going to draw employers to your region if everybody in the area is of retirement age. It's just, it's, and it becomes a vicious circle and you get locked into a progressively declining community. And I think that to me should be one of the top objectives of the official plan and or strategic plan, is to see some good sustainable growth in the future. So that, that's one thing I would love to see more of a priority in here, and it's particularly, perhaps a discussion paper could be added, but you know, everything else, I mean, it looks good, I'm not taking any issue with the numbers, but I think for a priority basis, that's something that we really, really, really have to look at, because these projections are, to me, are pretty grim. And I think we have to try to turn that around. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. Anyone else? Question, comment?
We have, I guess for a better description, if I have a better description, I'll say several irons in the fire at this particular time, as do our neighbors. Some of those are in the public eye and some of them, because of municipal act, they're behind closed doors right now, but I can see several of those having a major impact on our plan and some of those may be able to be made publicly known about in the near future, others may not be for years, so how do we compensate for that?
So that's a really good question. So, so one of the things, so a couple, a couple things. WSP has also been retained by the town to provide planning services, so as, you know, new developments, I mean, we don't process all the applications, but anything that is of the larger scale, of course, that will, you know, we'll be clicking about the official plan as well for that. You know, we have almost, we're regularly in touch with Matthew and back and forth in terms of something's coming down the pipe, that is public, of public nature. One of the things that will be important for those items that are closed or may not happen in the future is, it will be important for the town to convey that in a manner that can be planned for or at least have a policy directive. Without getting into specifics, there is a way that you can create policy to potentially allow something to come forward. So for, let me give you an example. Well, I guess one of the things, for example, is the, looking at the lands along Highway 401. And this also goes to the previous comment, is, you know, maybe some of those lands that are currently designated industrial don't make sense, maybe they should be commercial. I, I don't know the answer yet, we haven't really gotten to that point. But it's looking at your community at a high level, taking in what you can convey from a public perspective or things that could be potentially out there, and allowing the policies to be flexible in order to allow that to come to fruition. So it is partly us, but it's also working with the town, the community, to understand what are the desires, what are the aspirations, how can the town grow, what could potentially come. And then there's, you know, the official plan can, can set that policy framework, but there'll likely be other tools that need to be developed and that can help implement that, right? So there, it's a, two ways, it's communication, it's also looking at what other communities have done, how policy is written and making sure it's flexible to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to wind up with a document that is redundant within a year of it being published. Unfortunately, we wound up with the recreational master plan, which was completed a year later, our wing went down. If it had been done a year after, during, I'm sure the document would have been different than it is today, so you never can tell what's gonna happen in the area that will have a major impact on Prescott, either good or, or bad. So I guess what I want to be assured is the document we wind up with is alterable and alterable on a relatively short timeframe.
Just, Eric, so just building on what Nadia was saying, is that I think by doing this in concert with the strategic plan, and if the strategic vision of council is to, to really expand growth over the next several years, whether that's residential, economic, commercial, that type of thing, then I think that has an effect on some of the policies that we might choose in the official plan to be able to take advantage of that. So things come to mind in terms of density when it comes to residential developers, also talking about redevelopment of properties, both residential and commercial, and being able to make sure that we have the policies in the framework in place to be able to, to really take a hold of those opportunities as they come forward. So I think by doing the two in concert really helps to be able to frame the official plan and the policies we need to put in place, if those are the things that we're going to go after. Because if nothing else changes, I think what you're seeing here in the Hampson projection is just kind of that natural ebb and flow of a population and how they see that moving forward. It's incumbent on municipalities to set that strategic direction to say, we're not happy with that natural growth, we want to actually develop, or whatever it may be, and this is what we're going to do to get there. And so I think that's kind of key in how we, we frame this and being able to make sure that the product that we have at the end of the day really reflects and being able to take those new opportunities and bring them forward without having to go back and revise the official plan or so, revise laws and things like that. So I think that's really the key for me, is from what I'm hearing from some of the comments.
And just to augment that for you, Mr. Chair, is the, by the time we come back to council, that special meeting and through Section 26 of the Planning Act, we will have had some of those community engagement sessions. So, so that will be a good indicator, as well as, you know, what are the key policy directions? So that's an opportunity. So the other thing is, you know, council's not gonna only see the plan that goes to council for adoption, there will be check-in points and of course, you're always encouraged and welcome to come to these events as well. So the input that we... the input that we receive on the draft is important. And if there are things that you may know of that could be coming down the pipe, that can't be publicly said, but the policies could be revised slightly to enable that to happen. And that's the kind of two-way input and communication that we need to establish or to test to ensure that the plan is going to, you know, be as flexible and holistic as, as possible.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, ladies, for attending. Mayor Todd.
Sorry, if I just could go back to the growth thing and the discussion papers.
Yes.
If you've got an opinion on that, I'd, I'd really love to hear it through the chair. Because I, I think a discussion paper on community growth, it's gonna come off as part of the other items as well, but I mean, it's also, it's, it's a topic on its own, I would argue, as well, simply because it does feed back into everything else here. So, would it be possible to add that fifth discussion paper on that, on that specific? Just the topic of community growth?
Yes, I think we can. Um, I think we have to make sure that the wording is realistic. And what I mean by that is, you know, we don't want comments to be completely farfetched, right? So, I think for that discussion paper, and I would recommend that, um, we see the results of the council's strategic plan to help inform. And I think the wording for that discussion paper has to be quite, um, clear, because we have to set realistic expectations as well, too, and not, make sure that the comments that we get back are not totally, you know, farfetched.
And I'm not suggesting anything that we're gonna double our population in 10 years or anything like that. And so I agree with you, but I would also, you know, point to the, the growth that's happened in the North Grenville area, and some of it has started to trickle down.
Yeah.
I think it's always been something, I'm gonna speak for anybody else, but we've always hoped that we would eventually see that the dam that sort of stopped just the surface of Kemphill, and that trickle would become more of a flood, so we could actually, in the whole South Grenville area, see, see more good sustainable growth.
Yeah.
So anything we could do to, to add to that and make it something of a focal point, again, just speaking for myself, uh, would, would to me be very, very, a strong addition to, to the, to the plan itself. And I just, I don't know what our timing is. I mean, you mentioned the end of January. For our strategic plan, seems kind of optimistic, because we're just having the first meeting this Saturday, so I don't know if we're gonna have anything back that would be-
We were thinking we would have a kind of first draft, a rough draft of, of Saturday's results kind of coming in, uh, March or end of January, so that we could at least get some things out of it.
Just seems kind of quick, but if that's possible, that's fantastic. But anyway, that, this is my points on, on the growth thing, and again, just speaking for myself, not everyone, but it does seem to be a, a very strong party we need to, to look at here in the early.
So we can look at that if that's the direction we're given. We're happy to accommodate. And again, I think it's, um, that might flow very well from, uh, the discussions that happened on Saturday and subsequent. I didn't present, or we didn't present the full work plan in terms of the timing for the official plan review, partly on purpose. And the reasons for that are a number of things. The PPS, we don't wanna be drafting policy when we know that there's gonna be a new provincial policy statement. So we kind of put the process on hold last summer, last fall. And that's why the Henson work was, uh, pretty much completed in draft form. Secondly, we want council to go through your exercise on the strategic plan. So, this whole official plan review process is not gonna be done in one year. We're not gonna extend it forever either, but I think, um, at least from my perspective, once we, um, once we have the PPS, then that's really gonna dictate, okay, what's the timing after that? Because then we can establish, okay, what needs to be changed in addition to the community engagement events. So, um, so I'm hoping that, you know, we will have sort of a, a work plan kind of established with an end date, at least a target month. Right now, we, we're not setting one, because there's a few things that are up in the air, but we can't proceed with, with some of the almanacs to keep things going. And I think the momentum that builds from council's strategic plan exercise will help keep that dialogue going and, and help create, um, the thinking behind what needs to be put in policy.
Anyone else?
Hey, can I just ask, sorry, one last-
Sure.
On that additional discussion paper, while this is probably gonna be in your minds for a couple of days and after, and on Saturday, if there is a question that you want asked, I mean, if you think there's like, a key question, because we can, we can develop questions, but what does, what does growth look like to you, right? Like, that could be a general question. It could also be, what does a town need to do to achieve more growth? Some people may say we don't want more growth. So if through, if through that vein of thinking, if there is a question that you think would be appropriate to ask, if you could please pass that on to Matthew, you could then filter that to us, because, um, the way the questions are worded for that discussion paper will really dictate the results. So, like, gonna ask, if you can, uh, if you have a thought on those questions and cases. Because we can come up with them, but there may be something that comes out of your discussions that will really hit the nail on the head, if you will, um, so.
Sustainability is probably one of the keywords.
So we have to be careful with buzzwords, because not everybody understands what sustainability means. And some may say, no growth is sustainable.
Yeah. But I think we can provide enough information if that's not the case.
Yeah. So, again, um, doing a lot of community engagement and, and ensuring that people really understand the question, what is to ask. If there is something that comes to mind that might be helpful, please pass that on, so we can, uh, consider that.
House, your comment?
You're obviously aware of the strategic plan that we have now, but we're gonna start over again on Saturday. Could we ask you to take a look at that strategic, strategic plan and see if there is something in there that is maybe odd from your standpoint?
Sure, absolutely.
Or missing from your standpoint that we would benefit maybe, and communicate that to Matthew, so it could become part of our discussion on Saturday?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, how can we do that?
Okay, anyone else? Well, ladies, uh, you've obviously given us food for thought, um, to say the least.
Talking 2020.
And I, I think you can sense some anxiousness amongst us that we wanna be going on several things. And I, the mayor brought the discussion paper, and it sounds like it might be one of the avenues that would suit us to, we're, we're into our second term of council, asking questions concerning our official plan, and not getting many answers, because it was tied up in the review. So, um, yeah, and we can take our smaller feeder acts, I'll call them, the Recognizer Plan and Strategic Act, and use them to help us give you a better idea of what we're looking for. And it's, it's not easy for us to plan until we know what's available for us. If we can, as we said, field some questions through Mr. Nernstrom, that would be a help to get us started and give some clues to us as to what we could best, which best area we could look at first.
One thing I'm gonna mention, just while we're on this, is I encourage you on Saturday, and I don't know how it's being facilitated, but I encourage you to draw a picture. What does Prescott look for you, look, or what do you think Prescott will look like in the future? What is that? Because sometimes pictures can then be depicted into words, but sometimes having visuals can actually help. What is it about that picture, right? And it could be, I'm not an artist, by no stretch of the imagination, I'm lucky I can draw a stick person. But, one of the things, and I'm a visual learner, so one of the things that we employ in our engagement, and what I encourage council to do, is to not only look at words, but also maybe do a map or an illustration of what that looks like, because sometimes that, it's a cliche, but a word. What's the cliche? Words as a million words, or pictures of words combined? Thanks, and I see you. First day of work, I can't speak English. Great, and Frank Council, um, so, technology isn't working. So thanks for your patience, but I encourage you to think, draw a mental map or an illustration of what that is. And it may, doesn't have to be perfect, you don't have to share it with others, but that's gonna help you go through that journey as to what, what is growth in Prescott? What does that look like?
Well, thank you. We certainly have some fodder for some questions on Saturday through the strategic planning facilitator, I'm sure, and, uh, I'm sure we'll come back to you with, uh, with some interesting questions.
Right.
Thanks again, and please thank your, your third colleague-
Yeah, our apologies for that.
Who went and communicated with us there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but, uh-
Oh, that's fine.
You did hear a live voice, she is real. But again, if there are any other questions, the Henson report, please let us know, because we would like to, you know, wrap that up as well, with, uh, very much, cool off on that.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving very long, delegations. I don't believe we have any delegations here tonight. None, none mentioned prior to. So we go to our, uh, chairs of our committees. My next, some corporate services. House, you're young. Do you have any info to us tonight for their budget, what we're having tonight?
Uh, no, we're, uh, we're on track with our budget discussions, and, uh, Matthew's ready to take us to one of the last ones.
Hey. Give the ladies a moment here, get rearranged.
Mr. Eric, if you would, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, this evening, uh, we're gonna go through timeline. Uh, we're gonna go through the last series of budgets, being library, tourism, and then we'll also go through fees and revenue. So, here we are, January 6th, and, uh, as you can see, we're progressing along to the 5th meeting, talking about the defense budget and diving into the detail. So, again, we're gonna talk about revenue this evening, the active budget tourism, all right? Well, on the 20th, uh, which is our next meeting, we'll talk about taxation, as well as where we are with the overall budget, and, uh, further discussion around the project's budgets, and being able to identify them in a little bit more detail, and have a fossil discussion around what we would like to look at for 2020. So taking a look at the expense budgets, we'll go through library, economic development, tourism. The, the library budget, uh, for the most part, fairly similar to what it was in 2019. There's some ups and downs. Uh, this was vetted and created through the library board, and they have approved it as of summer of late, which is why we waited to bring it forward once after they had, had a chance to approve it. So if there was any questions you might have, I'm very happy to, to delve into them. You can see there is a, a focused increase on books, uh, purchases. Their budget for 2019 was $10,005,72, and then for 2020, they're looking at $12,000. So, um, those are kind of the, the major differences. The, the one thing that you'll also see is a $2,000 reduction in repairs. Last year, they replaced flooring in a particle library, and so they're not anticipating any major expenditures this year, so that's why there's a, a change there, that you're seeing a decrease. Uh, their computer licenses, uh, goes towards their various systems that they down in the library, and certainly, in fact, uh, more of a provincial license that, that they work under as well. As we move on to economic development, and so, uh, here, not a lot of changes, uh, some redistribution. Media changing, that they were not, were completed the bicycle ferry study, and so that won't be going into, uh, 2020. But when we take a look at the other lines, um, we have moved two items from tourism over into economic development, one being community branding, the other being, uh, the 410 TV videos. As we mentioned, in the course of 2019, we did a tour of RFP for a photographer, as well as a drone, um, videographer. And so those two things will be, what we're bringing forth in the 2020 budget, um, as we move forward. And then also in there, you see that there's Enor broadband, uh, we continue for, I believe, for another three years on that, until we finally have finished, and then the Enor 5G cell project, which works out to $6,600, just over a four-year period. The 2019 payment, uh, is being made as we speak, and then this is the 2020 payment, uh, as we move forward. Uh, the economic development corridor is in there as well, and so making that allowance. And then we put in $5,000 for a year review, which we're planning for in, in late January, which will have a, a little bit of a economic development, or a major economic development flair to it, to really review everything that's happened over the last year in town. And then I look forward to, uh, where we're going in, uh, 2020, as well as, um, great presentations by, uh, I believe, the Future Development Corporation, as well as, um, the Chamber of Commerce, to be able to come to, uh, to, uh, really talk about some of the programs that they're able to offer, and, and services to their members, and then as well as being able to also, um, highlight our CIP program, and, and how we can enhance, uh, people's projects and be able to help support that. So, uh, the other part of that is the ferry project, obviously, um, we're going to be looking for a, a more in-depth decision and discussion on that as we move through the budget process. Uh, we may have, have a bit of allowance in there to do some marketing, as well as, uh, maybe support perhaps the net cost, if there is one, and so, so that's in there as well at this point. We'll move to tourism. So, uh, not a lot of changes here, it's, um, mostly moving a few things around, increasing amounts where they're just not being employed or used. And then, uh, certainly as we kind of take a look, uh, you can see what we did in the two amounts over to, um, economic development, and then as well, uh, be able to talk about the number of initiatives that we'll, uh, again, have in, uh, 2020. So, certainly the life host has been a, a big improvement, uh, being able to, uh, to sell not only, uh, kind of treats and whatnot, but also, uh, journey a little bit of, uh, advice around some of the Prescott kits that you can purchase there, and so that's been well received. Certainly, uh, carries a bloom. Uh, we also have, this is where we report the amount for third-party tourism grants in the, the course of the year that we'll be discussing over the next month or so. And then, uh, you can see a number of initiatives, uh, as you go through the budget, it's also included in there. So when you take a look at the three together, the total budget for 2019 was about $605,000. The projection for 2019 is about $506,000, and then for 2020, reducing the total budget to $574,000. So, from budget to budget, that's a decrease of $30,000, which is, uh, the amount that, uh, is in relation to the bicycle ferry, um, reduction, so exactly what we've expected to be, and then holding all other, uh, costs stable. Uh, budget's projection of decrease of $11,000. So before I move on to revenues, I need to kind of, uh, comment about these particular three budgets.
Mr. Dan.
Um, just a, a couple of expenses, like the small dollars, this example is, um, back to the library under expenses for, um, the computer. Although the budget for 2019 was $1,000, the projection is only $1,53, yet we're doubling the budget, uh, to $2,000. There must be a story with that, isn't there?
Absolutely. So every year, they budget an amount for a computer replacement, that type of thing. Uh, they didn't, uh, take advantage of it this year, or didn't require it, but they certainly see the need to do some replacements in 2020.
Um, the contracted services under economic development, uh, budget for, uh, a budget of $17,000. What, oh, okay, I just think it's my own question. And under tourism, I know we talked about different annual events, of maybe not repeating them, if they're not necessarily successful. Could we consider maybe getting a, a working group together to kind of measure, um, overview, or have a roundtable discussion of, of, um, potential improvements or changes, or that kind of thing? And I'm talking, um, the movie nights, days- And I'm talking the movie nights, days of Prescott, that kind of thing.
Certainly, I think that's a good idea, to be able to walk through those, really gain some feedback and some where we can improve, or what things that we could add or delete from the overall, and so more than happy to, to look at that and move forward with it.
If that's okay. The third target tourism grants, I know that there was a committee that the John was that had, so the $49,000 projection for 2019 versus a budget for 19 and 20 and 21,000, the variance must be.
It was from Shakespeare, so the $30,000 that we gave to Shakespeare in 2019 was included in there, and as you can see, we were actually able to cover that through this budget that can cause an awards manager. So let's at least in that perspective, but yeah, so 21,4 is the amount that we've provided in previous years, and based on the more cases we see so far, that's sufficient for 2020 as well.
Good stuff, thank you.
Mayor Trump?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick questions through you. Just on the library, I didn't see any real additions, or maybe I missed it, because we did have that discussion about the in-library loan service, but I don't, it looks like there's no added expenses there, we're just using the postal service now, maybe, yeah, Councilor McConnell can maybe answer that?
If the words are right, I can add, there is a substantial increase, I think it went from 400 to 1,000 or something like that for postal, which the overall budget that we had is not a huge amount. The wages went up about, I think, $2,500 bucks, so those two things account for the largest increase in the budget. But you have postal.
Thank you, I didn't see that, so yeah, it makes perfect sense. And so there was, and one other library question, just on, you see cleaning contracts up to 2,000, is the library on a separate cleaning contract from the rest of town hall, or is that an internal thing that's being held back?
No, I think, I'm not 100% sure on what that is, but I believe it's actually for the mats that they have an external third party come and exchange for that, on regular basis, because I think they're just reusing that from other areas.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's not an internal allocation or anything, it's simply that they saw as required service for 2020.
And I just had, I guess, yeah, just the same, same comment, Councilor Jameson, about, yeah, just some of the events, and the one I looked at initially, they're small dollars, and we can look at trucking for a cure, they don't stop in Prescott anymore, they just drive through or go back to Rockville, so don't know what the expense there, it's only $500 bucks, but if we find a tune, some of that through a meeting would be, would be really good to, good to see.
So I wanted to give an update on trucking for a cure, I believe it will be in Prescott next year.
Oh, good.
Instead of being, starting in Rockville, I believe, instead of Prescott, and so I still will do a little bit more of an attraction and a little bit of acceleration on that as well.
Okay, yeah, that's good to know, because I thought last year and maybe even the year before, they just kind of. I thought they'd been altered maybe for stops?
Yeah, the year they do Prescott next year.
Why they also.
This is on the year.
Okay, so it was, yeah, they were regularly, it was always at Southern Hall, and yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's, those are all the questions I had, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Officer Green?
Thank you. Matthew, under tourism, page three, the zombie law, we're going to have a budget in $10,000?
So that's an amount that is given towards that group to be able to put on the event, so that's a request that they've made over the last several years, and so still putting it in there, but interesting to see if they're going to have that event or not, and then be able to support.
Wouldn't it be more feasible for them to apply for maybe more Hampsons instead of being in the budget process?
Yep.
And because if we start adding the zombie law, the, you know, outside organizations to our budget, then it takes away from the community grant process.
No problem, I mean, definitely take that out.
Councilor Donald?
I know we haven't met yet, but I thought that was part of the community grant, zombie law, it was other years.
We have received an amount, and then they've also asked in previous years, an amount from the VIA, an amount from, I suspect from town, so we'll bring that together into one.
Okay, thank you.
Does, does the committee grant come in because it's repetitious from year to year, or it's an established event, is that the criteria primarily?
Uh, no, it's, it's open to absolutely anyone that meets the eligibility criteria, and certainly we encourage people to, to apply. The, the one change that we're doing for the 2020 intake is that we have a follow-up kind of inter, intake, which will then form the basis of the major parts of the approval, but we'll also be offering a second intake in the spring to make sure that we capture anyone else that may have missed that initial one. This is the first year for that, and certainly we, we would like to try and get it a little bit more heated up, so that we're not necessarily approving things after they've already happened, or approving things that might not happen for another eight, 10 months.
Some seasonal things come, or.
Absolutely, I've done that.
Just, I know if we're being, this, this budget or not, tourism banners for downtown, you still had to purchase, I think, the scarf toe, or whatever you want to call them, those outside banners, we never did, are those coming this year?
Yes, both.
And, and we still have money left over in the 2019 project for that, and so we've got to. And the other, the other quick one was just on port of call-up grades, it's good to see the 4,000 in there and kind of make that more welcoming for ferry, if we do ferry, and also the visitors like the Canadian Empress. That will, I mean, we still have to look at that, that was in last year's budget, so the money's there somewhere, just a sign that we talked about, or the Prescott letter, so I'm just, that'll come back shortly, and that could be, if that's the location we decide, that'll be part and parcel of the same, the same port of.
Yep.
Any idea, just if I could ask through you, Mr. Chair, just how, how long that will, what, are we gonna get an update back on the construction, or whatever, whatever's happening with that project?
Certainly.
Catch up on that.
So I will probably bring an update back on that for January 20th, to be able to speak to that, but what we certainly found out is $15,000 certainly didn't go very far when we started talking about design designers and things like that. So one of the options that we want to bring forth to, to council is actually creating a Prescott sign in the berm right by the lighthouse, so that you'd be able to see it and make it out of flowers. So similar to what you see at the Ivy League, they have it kind of nicely done up, and that works well with our communities of bloom, and being able to set those flowers directly into that, that berm, or the side of the hill, and so then we make a nice floor of this pipe, so that'd be certainly more of our within our budget, and it's certainly something that we'd want to discuss with council.
Yeah, I don't want to speak too much to that, thanks, I remember we did talk about that a while ago, I think you did mention that council, maybe involved, so. My, my only concern about that is everything's concentrated within the harbor, really, and then other sections kind of been neglected in front of Prescott, and they used to have something a little clearer, maybe we can make it big enough, so maybe the same concept in a slightly different area, we had that discussion, so we have. It's an interesting concept, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Officer Green?
Thank you. Matthew, under economic development, page one, when we talked earlier today about the meeting expenses, it's $30, and then it goes up to $14, and then $1,000. Do you mind letting everybody else know what we were discussing today about your train of thought on that?
Absolutely, so one of the things that I think we are starting to realize is that it would be fantastic to have a venue for economic development leaders in the capital of Prescott, to be able to provide their feedback into how they can grow, how they can help with their sustainability, and then how we can also work with them to attract new complementary. So to that end, the thought here was to create a economic development committee group, advisory group, whatever you might want to call it, and really to provide those with support in terms of means and that sort of thing. So it's something that we see in a couple of areas that might be really beneficial, and certainly we want to engage our economic community as, as much as possible to, to see how we can help them be successful, which therefore helps us be successful. So really, that was the kind of concept of the idea behind that.
Thank you.
Mayor Trump?
Great idea, my only suggestion would be there's some, some industrial leaders that we could tap for that, because there's Jusheli Bacon, or Northern Cables, or Mark Seymour, perhaps, or someone from Crisco. I would go down that, or we'd like to kind of go outside of the box, and we're not just looking at downtown, whatever, I mean, it's also an always nice whole community, that's a, that's a great idea.
So really, our thinking started to be around those industrial type businesses, because we have quite a few that we don't spend a lot of time communicating with, and as well as we see the growing of the night view combination, the bed and breakfast, the suns in, things like that, as well as our more commercial sites. So, so we would like a really big cross section of the overall economic drivers of John Prescott, and really that's what we're trying to get to. It's great, thank you. So just moving on to the summit, and so at this point, you've presented the budget for 2020, the expense side of the budget, and as you can see, from a budget-to-budget standpoint, from 2019 to 2020, it's an increase of approximately $51,322, approximately. And so when you take a look at that, I am pleased to report that based on the preliminary numbers we received from Joint Services of the United Counties, that we'll be able to reduce that further, and then also we want to incorporate State Lawrence Lodge levy as well as the impact levy that we've received. The only case that we don't have about this one is State Lawrence Lodge, but we're expecting that this week, and we believe we can actually pull that number down further. That will be kind of the basis of our discussion when we get to the 20th, to be able to say, what are some of the things that we want to take a look at when it comes to perhaps increases to value, so sidewalks, as well as there is a, a project that the VIA and Chamber of Commerce have been discussing of having a joint coordinator, and is there ability for the town to support them as well from a cost perspective, to be able to be enough to fruition, provide them with some space in, in the downtown, and we'll move that forward. So we were very happy to, to be able to, to say that we're not seeing big expense increases from budget to budget, and really that's what we're, we're focusing on over the next few weeks, and then as we start to talk about projects, that will have some determination on, on where we end up. So next we'll move to fees and revenue, and there's not a lot of big changes here, but I'll, I'll hit the highlights as we go through. So administration, we've already talked about the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, $1,200 more than we received in 2019, so that's already confirmed, and we're happy to, to know that number before we had even started the budget process, that was very helpful. We're continuing to see growth in the number of marriages that we do, and so we're expecting that to continue into 2020, and it really is become a bit of a revenue generation for, for what we're doing. On the other side, lottery licenses, it's in ebb and flow, and so we have a couple of large lottery licenses that have been, might have a difference from one year to the next, and so we didn't see that rejuvenation that we were expecting in 2019, and not really expecting to see it perhaps in 2020, but that's certainly something that we'll look to, to see how we can maximize that any way we can. Administration with the fees, that tends to be the unknown throughout the year, might be a rebate check, might be those small things, sale of items as we go through it this year, whatever it might be, and so that's what you're seeing there. Dividends from year to year, the vast majority of that being our amount that we see from our myself, and so you're seeing that, so recorded there. Short-term interest, we're seeing that, you know, rates are likely at this point staying stable, but we'll see maybe moving to 2020 throughout. Ceremonies for marriages, we're also up a little bit. Death certificates, interest on taxes, as we collected more, that's starting to come down in terms of the amount that, that we're generating through that, and then tax certificates as well, it's, you know, it comes in as, as it goes, and so there's not a lot of things that we can use to maximize that. I did move the modernization amount out, and so that's not affecting the overall number, and it's a, it's a, it could be from one year to the next. Any questions on that, or move on? Moving on to protective services, so fire, certainly there's a portion of that that comes from our neighboring municipalities, on the docket for 2020 is the negotiation of the fire agreements with Augusta and Wiltford Cargo. There's also an announcement we see from MTO, and then every year, we spend approximately $30,000 on equipment that we put into reserve and then bring out and preserve, so that's the majority of what you're seeing there. The police budget, we're seeing a reduction there, and so we received a community policing grant previously, and that was about $30,000 to $32,000. It's now under the new auspices of how they've reshaped all of the various funding for resources that are total for the next few years is $22,500. That was an amount that we submitted, it was an amount that, this is your amount, and figure out the projects to make a part. So certainly we did see a reduction from year over year on, on that one in particular. Protective services, that is mostly our licensing and fines for taxis, refreshment carts, parking fees, those types of things, and you can see that, we've seen what we thought we would, and so a small increase from year over year. Building, we had the previous discussion around the fact that we didn't receive any large projects in 2019, and, but certainly there's a couple that are in, are mostly imminent, and so we don't foresee yet 2020 being an issue of reaching that budget. And finally, provincial offenses, that amount is administered by the Joint Services at the United Counties, and we're also pleased to say that I believe that's going up for 2020 as well, which will revise on January 20th, when we get to the next meeting. When we move to transportation, there's some damage operations, we don't budget for it, but if you're successful, it's our student funding, and certainly that's what we put in. Because we don't know if we're going to be successful from year to year, we certainly don't include it in the budget, because it tends to be very variable when it comes to student funding. The next part is the paved roads, and that's the OSIF grant that we received, as well as small enough road cuts, and so seriously not a lot of change there. Traffic, mostly just slight permits and things like that when it comes to, I think the prime example was the large portal going through town at the end of the summer, and so in that case, when we have to disrupt traffic or close roads, then there's a small license fee, a permit fee for that as well. Parking lots, that's the sale of parking spaces, and you're seeing that the, our number that we're selling, or we're selling to Prescott Place has diminished, and so, but certainly we're seeing a little bit of uptake, I believe, to permits have been issued so far for the areas that we expand in terms of the overnight parking in, in various areas of town. Waste collection, we're seeing an increase there in terms of the bag fees, that's been growing over the last few years, and then we have changed rates over the last several years, but certainly the number of tons of garbage has increased. And then finally, waste abversion is the amount we receive, which is 50% of our expenses over the cost of recycling and that type of thing. From there, health and social services revenue, we have the health center, but I think there was a change to CPAC and their rental of space in 2019, so you're seeing that decrease and, and about expecting a resurgence in 2020. State Lawrence Lodge is the amount that we receive as a, an outstanding amount from the government. and for the pensions that we pay for State Lawrence Lodge. So we do receive an offsetting amount that covered a portion of it. And that's just simply reflecting that the Ministry of Health is putting in over that warm term for the pensions. Next, we have parks and recreation revenues. So we have Walker House, year over year fairly similar, rec programs, slight decrease, but we also had a decrease in costs. The marina, I'm pleased to say that this will be the first year that we're budgeting a break even for the marina. A lot of work was done this year to get boats and the appropriate sized slips to be able to fit those larger boats in to increase revenue. So we're projecting that we will be able to, as we get that this year. One of the things that hurt us in 2019 is again a high river level. And so the price, our gas revenue certainly wasn't what we hoped for. But it certainly was offset by the fact that we were able to purchase cheaper gas by changing suppliers. So that certainly helped from a bottom line perspective. Pool revenue, pretty much the same, community center. We're pleased to report that that is increasing year over year and projected to be about $10,000 for this year and using the same methodology going into next year. And then library revenue equal to the expense. And so certainly we just cut that a couple of minutes ago. Higher planning and development, so planning and development, these planning fees get very charged out. We don't generate a lot, but as we've been, it's likely to get more of these applications. And certainly it's driving up some of that revenue. And then community adjustment, there's fees there as well to be able to support the activities of that community. Economic development, as I mentioned earlier, that it's a decrease of $30,000 from both revenue and expenses for when it comes to the ferry project. And then tourism, looking that that's actually increasing. And the light house in particular has seen a substantial increase in revenue year over year. So we're very happy that that's occurring. And while at the same time, I think you noticed a little bit ago that the expenses are also increasing. So certainly the two are offsetting. But we're happy to say that it is making a small profit and breaking even. And so it's not something that we're having to support otherwise. So when you take a look at the total operations revenue, and this is not including property taxes because we wanted to hold that off until towards the end of the month as we receive more information. But you're seeing a total decrease of only $4,200 year over year. And so that's also inclusive of the $30,000 decrease that we see when we looked at in economic development. And so certainly we're very pleased to be able to present that the total change when it comes to a net result is only about $60,000 when you include the decrease in revenue and the increase in expense. And as I mentioned, there's a couple of improvements I haven't said we received last week. But we'll be able to analyze further on the 20th of January. So in terms of where we go next, as I mentioned, on the 20th of January, we'll come back, take a look at the operations budget, be able to incorporate some pieces of information and have a pulseful discussion around areas that we might want to add back, such as working around sidewalks and as well as working with the DIA and the Chamber of Commerce, the joint coordinator. We'll discuss taxation and the effective, the effective new information as well as any of those increases might be. And then also the projects review. So taking all of those operational and capital projects and seeing which ones we want to move forward with in 2020 and which ones we either want more information on or will hold the ban. So I think from my perspective, we've gone through the mini-gritty and then more detailed information. Now we're able to take a slower second look and step back and be able to really determine how we want to align this with a strategic plan and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Sorry.
It's okay. Just a couple of comments in a few areas, if I may, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions and just a couple of basic comments. Just going back to protective services, just on the fire agreements. That's something I was hoping we could get to a presentation here at some point in the near future so we can actually take a serious look at that. What the overall picture is, I know we are providing that service to both Augusta and Edwardsburg Cardinal. And Edwardsburg Cardinal doesn't include that industrial park, which has always been a major concern of mine just because there's obviously a safety risk that everyone covering fires down there. Obviously five million dollar fire hall, well over a million dollars in vehicles, equipment and everything else. So I just want to make sure that we're covering ourselves out there and seeing a proper rate of return for such a valuable service in such a great fire department. So if I could through you, Mr. Chair, to the CAO, any idea whether we'd be able to look at something like that? And just kind of assess the whole thing and have a good roundtable discussion of it?
Actually, I see that happening just based on timing, probably in February. I believe we're happy to say that the fire chiefs have worked out the technical sides of the understanding of what gets covered, what gets cold and those types of things. Now it becomes more of a philosophical conversation around how we put a dollar amount to that service and then on what basis. So certainly I think that will be the next step in our evolution of that discussion. And but what we wanted to do is allow the fire chiefs to make sure that they were comfortable with defining what service is provided and then moving forward.
Safety, of course, is paramount. We do have an obligation to our taxpayers as well. We have a pretty expensive service and we should be subsidizing it. A couple of other quick ones, if I may, Mr. Chair. Just on waste collection, we haven't really had a discussion on that. God knows I don't want to increase any fees, but I do want to, are we at the point where, are we at a healthy point with the overall service? Are we charging enough? Are we charging too much for the bags? I mean, I don't know. We haven't really had that discussion. And that ties back into recycling because to me, I look at it all as one big service. Anyway, we can make it self-sustaining, I think it's something we should probably look at. So I don't know if that requires further discussion or, because we have had the recycling conversation as well. So I'll just mention that as a, and the others, I just, the marina, you know, the breaking even. Question I did have of that, if I could through you, Mr. Chair, that breaking even, does that include any of the capital? Or are we just talking straight operations?
So that includes a contribution to reserves of $42,500. And so any capital improvements that we do will come out of the reserve then. But it does absolutely include that capital contribution.
That's great. That's really good. Yeah, it's really good to hear. But I mean, we are still catching up as we put a lot more than that just in the last couple of years. With the electrical issues, the dock repairs ongoing. So are we going to be sustainable, if I could through you again, sustainable going forward as well? Because I know there's more dock work that needs to be done.
So absolutely. And I think that will definitely become part of the discussion as we move throughout the year on our asset management plan. And being able to really define what we need to do on the next level basis. Just creating that infrastructure is getting a lot of work to do. And so certainly we need to take a systematic approach to, to revise that. We don't know the exact numbers at this point, but that looks like there's still a little bit more engineering work left to do. But absolutely, it will be part of the discussion.
And the very last one is just on planning fees, just the open question, are they where they need to be as well? Are we receiving a good rate of return? But just, I don't want to add to burden of local taxpayers and double dip on this. But I want to make sure we're actually covering our costs and everything as well. I know that's been an issue in the past. So if I could ask you again, Mr. Merriman, Mr. Armstrong, comfortable with that? Or is that something that you should be looking at, you know, more deeper analysis to see if we're getting good cost recovery?
So I think one of the things that we'd like to do in February is come back with a little bit of analysis around the charges that we have currently. And how do they compare to our neighbors? And then is it covered in the cost of providing those options? So certainly I think, you know, we've located with, I thought I took the budget to be passed at the end of January. And I think having that discussion in February would be helpful. And our group has done a great job of looking up at some of those administrative fees. And then taking a look at the building fund fees, that would be a great opportunity.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd certainly really like to, we'll go forward and conversation.
Mr. Merriman, any comment on that at all? Just other than to reiterate what Matt said, that the secret is to bring it forward. It's always a tough battle. There's no doubt, there's many times that it's not cost recovery. At the same point, you want to compare it to your neighbors to see where they're at. And you're not looking to, you know, deaden any expectations for growth and stuff like that. So one of the things you have to be very careful of is not increasing the rates so bad that it, because even though it's still a very small portion of the total bill for what they're building, it can have a huge effect emotionally whether or not you wish to proceed. There's no doubt that any of the fees, like I say, minor variances, I think are what, $500 or something like that. It's really small compared to most of the other places I've come from. And there's a lot of things that work really good because as I understand it, your committee members and stuff, once you're set, don't necessarily get compensated for it. Whereas in other towns, they do. So that helps keep costs down. But there's no doubt if we have to use a planning consultant on any of it, it doesn't take very long till that $500 bucks is gone and then it's not much.
So I just want to make sure we wrap the conversation as well. Because in years past, we haven't had the conversation. You know, you let it go for a few years, I guess, to the point where you've got more serious options to make. So thanks. We'll look forward to that in February before we pass the motion. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Some years there is changes and other years there isn't. So you have to strike a balance somewhere. Councilor Con, do you, are we, are we?
Well, not impatiently. Mayor Todd reminded me of something when he spoke about garbage and the amount that we get from the garbage bags that we sell. It's projected to be eight grand more this year than last year from the looks of it. Given the fact that we don't operate a dump. So we're not paying to support the dump, the boat, the dump. Other than indirectly through the fees that we pay the people that actually collect our garbage. And given the fact that people are having to put more plastic in their garbage because they can't recycle it anymore, because the places they used to take it are not taking it anymore. If we're making a significant profit, garbage bag sales, I think maybe we should take a look at that. Drop a bit to help compensate for the fact that these are going to have to use more garbage bags. So perhaps if you could give us an idea of how much we're spending in garbage bags and how much we're selling in garbage bags, we could have a look at that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Michael?
Councilor Young.
I feel bad that these ladies are sitting here waiting for our in-camera session to give us some advice. And I know that.
I was going to pick a point here where I could say that they're certainly excused if they wish. Or if this is an intense learning period for you.
They're staying for our in-camera meeting to give us some advice on our discussion there.
Sure.
So I'm wondering if we could go in camera now and finish up our meeting after that. Is that possible?
I think it's completely possible. I think the only other thing on the agenda is 2019.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Then let's be aware that these women have an iPhone.
Exactly. Exactly. Our apologies. We, no, let's find, comments. Small town action, you know.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So we're finished? Okay, good. Thank you. I just want to make sure. Next item is the, oh, sorry.
Can I just propose to have to put on the action list, user review, especially the one Mayor Todd brought up, that Edwardsburg Cardinal industrial park? Just to keep it on the radar. All the, all the user reviews.
Okay, certainly. Okay, item 6.2, Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks Letter, ED1991. For information, Councilor Young, would you, if I may, share a link to speak to the letter?
No. I'll pass that on to Matthew. He'll have a chance to read the letter and read the stories in the paper regarding ED19. Some of you may not know, or certainly our taxpayers do not know, that we invested in this project back in the days. And so we do have, we do have some interest in it.
I suppose the big question is, can we recover some? I'll pass that over to him.
Sure. Mr. Ford will send us a check.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. We reached out to the United Counties and certainly they were good enough to provide a resolution that was passed back in 1998. And it speaks to the fact that the city of Brockville, Towne Prescott, and the United Counties all went in on the cost for that. I believe back in 1998 that our share was approximately $8,000. And then there's been small amounts on a yearly basis to just cover any additional cost that might be in relation to that. Most recent invoice we received in March of 2019, it was $591.49. So we're still waiting for an overall accounting from the United Counties in terms of how much Prescott has put in. But certainly it wouldn't be all that more substantial than the initial placement of $8,000. That being said, the resolution does talk about in the event that the project does not proceed and that the lands are subsequently divided surplus and so the parties agree that the net deficit or surplus be shared on the basis of assessment. So that has been how we've been in kind of sharing in the cost so far. And certainly as we move forward, depending on what political side of the United Counties, the amount that will have an effect on what comes back.
Okay, Mr. Mayor Todd?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked for the CAO to have this tonight because obviously it's, it's still a significant amount of money. And the project is not, especially if you look into interest, whatever the conditions are of that $8,000 investment down 22 years ago. Plus those, I thought they were sort of annual fees at one point. It's only a few hundred dollars or whatever a year, but it does add up and it does. So my point to bring it forward tonight is that we get a dialogue going with the city and the United Counties and just basically see what the next steps are. We haven't really been involved in this. The United Counties have been involved in the lead on this all along. And quite frankly, it was probably pretty good fight to stay out of there for a while. But we're at the point now where it looks like it's not going to proceed at all unless someone actually wants to take it right back to square one. So I'd love to establish a dialogue with the counties in Brockville and just see what, you know, what a good way forward is here. And I don't know if there's any way we can see a return on that investment going back to 98 and the counties are going to be selling it. But I think we need to be engaged now because it does look like it's not going to proceed as was originally forecast. And I think we need to really look at looking after our investment there and see what we can do to recover that. So I'd be happy to make a motion tonight that we ask, we direct staff to begin that consultation. Something's already started, but just to formalize it, that we have direct staff to begin that consultation with the city of Brockville and the United Counties to lead us a grand goal towards future, future next steps on the ED19 project.
Councilor Con.
I wholeheartedly agree with what you just said. But I think based on what's happened here over the last 20 years, and you being our representative on the United Counties Council, that this council should have a look at the situation and decide on a, an opinion, shall we say. Either we don't want it to go ahead or in the case that they do decide that they're going to get a new economic or environmental study done for government on how much money, I should think that they would have to vote on that. And I think you should be direct it from us.
I'm actually not. That's the one point of clarity I do want to make. Joint Services doesn't have anything to do with waste management. So this has never come up in a meeting I've attended. It's all just United Counties alone. Joint Services agreement, that's actually part of the reason I wanted to come forward with a motion to look at Joint Services because it specifically, it's very tightly binding. with the motion to look at Joint Services because it specifically, it very tightly binds us to what we discussed. It's land ambulance and social services and the Subprovincial Offenses Act, nothing else. And so this has never come up and I've never had a vote on any of this.
So, I mean, I wouldn't have been here when it, I don't think it was. So we agreed to kick in $80,000 and have absolutely no vote on, and it went forward on it?
It actually.
It's a little odd.
I mean, it actually predates the Joint Services Agreement by a couple of years as well, so I can't really say what the arrangements were at the time, but it was a side deal that was never brought into anything with Joint Services. Like I said, Joint Services is a very tightly, very tight agreement, and it's just those topics that are a lot of discussion there. And I have found that over the last couple of years, it's become more restrictive where we can't range inside of those topics, even discuss possibilities like we did for modernization and ended up in a bit of a battle for how we would even discuss modernization, which again is why I asked for that motion to be brought forward earlier in the year. So this just gets a dialogue going and we see what their plans are, what they're going to do for voting. They could sell the property, they could, I, I, I can't even, but I just want to bring it back here so we can have the discussion and then see what they're proposing. We don't know what the city of Brockville is planning here as well, because the city's got, I think roughly four to five times what we have invested in it, so they've got an even more significant investment. I'm sure that discussion will become a part of City Council as well, but I just want to make sure we look at it and we can ask the questions and direct staff to find out what the next steps are. Quite frankly, I really don't know because it's all been handled by United Counties. We've gotten some updates on occasion, but we haven't been, like I said, it's not part of the Joint Services Agreement, so we have no voice or fault in this matter.
Well, you've given that, I don't think it would hurt for us to have a policy, either we're in favor of it or we're not in favor of it. We're not in favor, but we don't want to spend any more money on it.
Absolutely, which is why I asked for the motion, Mr. Armstrong. Bring it back.
I think perhaps we could, just my one opinion, we could maybe wait and see where it's actually going. I mean, Brockville hasn't committed anything and the United Counties just give us face value at the time of what it was worth. So I don't know, I, we're looking for the horse, not necessarily, but we.
I have an opportunity next week to meet with several of the CAOs in these companies, so certainly I can bring you up at that point and then report back to council in terms of what the concept of the next steps are.
I'm just trying to cap the motion here, so we'll try to.
Roll through.
So I will put the motion forward and ask for a second.
Okay. Can we have a motion on that question?
Yes. So it's been filed, seconded by Councilor McConnell. The staff were directed to begin consultations with the city of Brockville, the United Counties, and Queens and Grumble on the next steps of the ED19 landfill project.
Any further discussion, huh? All in favor? Close. Ladies, you're both welcome to take your leave if you wish.
They're staying to advise us in.
Oh, pardon me. Rookie mistake. Okay, operations, item 7 here, portfolio chair, House of Young, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report? Economic development, going by law, planning and heritage.
All good.
Question again?
All good.
For now. Water and wastewater.
We're still getting water and our wastewater is going east, so I have no problems.
Project. Projection is we're going to have lots of it. Protective Service, PD Lee is on, that's me, and nothing to report at this time. Capital and projects, House of Congress.
Nothing to report.
Any new business items that we have overlooked, bypassed, or otherwise made more? Period for media questions. Tell them. Mr. Lowery.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you.
What, $50,000, how much does 1%? Approximately $50,000. Well, $50,000, so, okay. So this $50,000, you suspect might go down? Correct. But, but it's not going to be more than that, so you're looking at less than a 1% tax increase.
That's what staff is struggling for before any addition of the infrastructure 1% that we've implemented the last several years. So from an inflationary standpoint, we're looking at something less than 1%.
Okay. That concludes our committee portion of our meeting tonight. We will hopefully begin the closed session.
Moved by myself, signed by Councilor Shankar, that Committee of the Whole resolved into council and moved into closed session at 7:55 PM. To address matters pertaining to 14.1, purchase and sale, under section 239(c) of the Municipal Act 2001, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, and the CAO treasurer, clerk, and Nadia Desanti, and Anita Sigh, planning consultants, will be in the room.
Okay, moved by Councilor Young, signed by Councilor Shankar, that move into, resolve into council, move into closed session at 7:55 AM. All in favor? Vote. Thank you.
Take a really quick quiet break and then come back for the next one. Mr. Chair.